Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight on a more pleasant night for a change. If you'll please rise, we'll have a deliberation tonight by Pastor Tim Luth from the Hugo Church, and our Police Chief Dennis Pires will lead us into pledge allegiance. There'll be anybody over there. Thank you. Give it a chance to locate where he is. Let's pray.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for protecting us. We thank you that so many people came through this storm without harm. We thank you that so many of us were fortunate. But as I've already told our people, that you made it through it so that you can help somebody else today. So, I pray to God that as we do our part and reach out to our neighbors and those around us in our greater area, that, Lord, you would just help us to shiv the love that needs to be shown right now as so many people are hurting. Thank you, Lord, that those who have been affected, so many of them have such great attitudes and are very positive about the future. And I thank you that we've been able to see probably the best in human beings over these past few days. And, Lord, now we thank you for the opportunity going forward to be light for not only the state of Texas, but for the whole nation in the world. And just bless us in these efforts, Lord. Bless this city, counsel, God, in this meeting and the things they have undertaken tonight. And thank you, Lord, for letting us live in the best city, in the best state, in the best country in the world. And senior staff, stand with right. Stand with left. Let's raise the flag. I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll take the pledge.
On our behalf, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, I request my appreciation for you being here tonight. And we're meeting here tonight in the courtroom because the one, the location on the second floor, where we met in the previous several council meetings was an opportunity. It's where our first responder was sleeping, so we don't want to wake him up. And so we're... So, but, and being this is our Pearland major courtroom, the judge requested you watch your language, please, and go ahead. But we appreciate that you've given us the opportunity to be here. And I hope that we will be able to make certain that our work tonight reflects a feeling of pleasure that we have by serving all of our citizens in our community. One of the things I want to mention to you, we are modifying our agenda tonight because it is rather lengthy. And we feel like we have an awful lot to talk about. They probably need to get you going because you still may be heading water in your area. New business items number four, nine, 10, 12, 14, and 15 will be pulled from the agenda. And we'll be pulled from the agenda and will be on a future council agenda for our consideration. And what we will try to do is move with some dispatch tonight. And if you'll follow me as we go through the process, I'll indicate these particular items that were probably from the agenda when they come up in sequence. We'll have to change the sequence on the copy of the agenda that I put up for us. That information is on the record. We do have our entire city council here. They're all a little bit more dry. Some of them got hot ears. And we're ready to do some work here on a quick link to agenda. Moving to new business item, number item four on our agenda, which is council opportunities to listen to the citizen comments. Although we had a couple of comments, but they are relative to an agenda item. We will pull and bring that to our attention and your attention when we get to that item on the agenda. So let's move into public hearing. We do have adopted a public hearing. A adopted public hearing in accordance with a 24 CMR 91.105 citizen participation of the Code of Federal Regulations set forth by the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Cities Program Year 2014 Annual Action Plan and providing an opportunity for citizen participation in public involvement in the proposed amendments. Just done, I'd like to go to staff review and ask you, you'll present the staff review with us.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Our first item tonight is at both of the public hearing with regard to money from our 2014 program year allocation that was given to us during fiscal year 2015. From time to time, we have expenditures that we don't necessarily allocate projects. They may come from the program administration, a part of the budget that may not get spent, or some other activity that may come in under budget. And we have an amount of just over $46,000 that we would like to reallocate to some items that are of importance to our community. One of those items is the replacement of the HVAC unit at the NAP Center, which has been an undersized unit based on our assessment and is not providing the performance that we need. And we want to replace that with a NAP unit. We're asking to reallocate $30,000 of that $46,000 amount to that effect. And we also would like to use the remaining balance of the funds available on the former $16,850 to fund an renovation and repair of a storage facility at Pearland Neighborhood Center that that agency would like to use for a purpose of storing some of their donation items. It's a facility that had a different purpose that they sort of had to double the repurpose for storage, but it's got some holes in the walls and just does not function the way that they need to secure some of those items. And they have some very important activities that they conduct around the holidays that require that they need space for that. So we'd like to help them put that facility in a position to be used for that purpose. And we are now in the midst of a public comment period that will expire on September 23rd. This is a final amendment to the plan, so it doesn't really require us to go through a whole block with administrative activities involved with HUD. We just need to hope this public hearing gives citizens an opportunity to comment on our request to reallocate the funds because it does change the scope of work slightly from that program year's action plan. So with that, the next steps after the public comment period ends will allow us to engage HUD and put administrative actions to reallocate those funds and immediately put them to use for this purpose. With that, we're on our pass back.
Okay. I complete your report.
Yes, it does.
Good. Let's move to item seven on our public hearing agenda. Citizen comments. Were there any citizens in the audience who'd like to make a comment regarding this proposed public hearing? Do you please come forward and just... Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to do a big part? There is, Dr. Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
I guess I'll fill out from just a second. Buck Stevens, 4701 West Orange in Pearland. I'm also on the board of directors of Pearland Neighborhood Center, so we appreciate any allocation towards our venue there. We're very appreciative of the city allowing us to use that facility, but those recognition units that are up on top are, well, much older than most things around here. So they've done their job and are doing it in this part, and we appreciate any consideration and action. Thank you.
Right. After reviewing the application, all of the items are worthy items. They address some specific items that improve the performance of these organizations. And in fact, I'm very impressed with the ability to show a party. I appreciate you being able to work with these organizations and the ACAC to make a impact. Let's go through staff review of this professional program. You have any questions, of course, it's all right.
No comment, Mayor.
No comment, Mayor.
No comment, Mayor.
I'm good. No comment, Mayor?
No comment, Mayor.
You're good. That in place, does the staff have any further comments on this item?
No, ma'am. I brought some out here.
That's good. Okay. I'll move on to item nine on our public hearing, public hearing agenda, which allow me to adjourn. This time along the public hearing. Moving to item number 10, which is consent agenda, which consists of items A through J. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda as presented? There you go. I'll ask Councilmember Corbone if he will present the next question.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through J. So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any comments or discussion from the council? There you go. We do have motion, second on the floor. Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Corbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland? Consent agenda will approve six to zero. Seven to zero.
That information is on the record. He did show up. That information is on the record. Let's move to new business. Item number one. And I'll ask our seven members, if they heard some people, to address this on this issue.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to share and make the opportunity to talk about... Last few days, our staff's been fantastic. Want to thank them. I've got to know them really well, sleeping in a police station with them, on a cot, on a air mattress. Staff's all been 24/7. While we were holed up here trying to direct and support everybody, we had hundreds of people out in the field doing fantastic work. A lot of people had losses in their homes, weren't sure about what was going on in their own places and their families, and they stayed here on station. We had some great partners. I've shared to you as best I can about some of the work, you know, the meander, the cedar park rescue vehicles that drove in to help us was outstanding. And then I asked, and they came out, Mikeios from the Dink Fringe District. You know, they're the ones that think about these things when the skies are blue. And their systems did everything that they could. They're first class. You know, this is a storm of biblical proportions that nothing you design really can take care of. Want to thank Mike. And, you know, then when the storm came, they brought in their trucks and they worked with us and did some of the high water rescues. And then Dr. Kelly is here from Pearland ISB. He's someone else that totally opened up their facilities. They, we had a police substation going on there. And they've had a shelter in their high school, which is still running and helping people. If you would buy there, it's pretty stark in terms of the impact on people. And he also gave us some buses for moving people around. So, you know, we've had just a lot. But we fared better than most for a lot of reasons. You know, not having the river in town like our neighbors, being fairly upstream, and then all the investments and the work that happened to this point. They've really shown through. You drive around the day, traffic's moving, stores are open, people are getting back to work. And, you know, so we're starting to, we're not taking, being complacent. I realize I've been around, seen some of the areas that have been heavily impacted. So we know there's a lot of work ahead. Want to thank Chief Fires and Chief Riley. They were our instant commanders. You know, they got us through the last four days. As of 6:00 tonight, gave that honor to Trent Epperson here on my left. And he's going to be seeing us through for, for seal of future at least as we balance out some of the assessments and the respirations and all the work that's going on ahead. So I want to thank you, Mayor, Council, for all the notes and support.
Okay. Thank you. You know, we're so very, very fortunate in Pearland to have the quality staff that we have. It's just, all you have to do is go through a process of something like this and work with them on a day-to-day basis. And I've had the opportunity to be part of the Operations Control Center. And I know I've been recognized and Dr. John Kettig, who's a supervisor of the school system, I know he's going through the same problem right now with the school system. And so it's something that we don't enjoy doing, but we find it's a pleasure and not only a strong obligation, but a pleasure to be able to perform at our very best when these type of instances come to visit the best. And it's unfortunate that Ike, when he was here, he kicked over a few cans, knocked a tree over, and dumped a lot of water into that town a long way. And this guy came in and he, I thought he was going homestead for a while. But he finally moved on and started finding someplace to find a home. But I'll have to say that Clay has been a great inspiration to all of us in his leadership, along with all of our senior staff. And it's just, you go down the list, the fire, EMS, your police officers, your public works directors, your parks people, your IT men, your people in your, your various organizations. People like the Animal Control Shelter that had to go out and rescue a lot of the pets of people, which was a very personal thing as well. So I think it was done not only with class, but it was done with a strong sense of responsibility. And I'm still very, very proud of what we did and what we as a community worked with each other, with organizations in our town stepping up, contributing food and water and helping their neighbors. It's just, we suddenly became Pearland a family, a family in Pearland. So thank you for all the things that you personally did. Thank you for everything that you have contributed to. And if you have a chance to see one of the guys on our staff, who went out to pull people out of the water, who went out and pelted trash out of a covert so that the water would flow easier away from a house, and pins of this type, and pick up animals in the town. When you see these people from the city, say thank you to them. It's, they did a human job. That information is on the record. Let's move to item, new business item number two. And Clay, this is a citizen's report of action regarding the Cities Council, the city of Pearland, in accordance with section 418, 108. B of the Texas Government Code, authorized extension of the Declaration of Emergency associated with the hurricane, arid beyond seven days.
Thanks, sir. As part of the government code, we have the ability to, Mayor's Declaration of State of Emergency. That provides legal basis for curfews and controlling access and ingress and egress. Don't expect that we're going to have to use this for the foreseeable future, but as precautionary note, we are allowed to do that with your blessing for seven days. Anything after that needs council concurrence. And just to be on the safe side, we ask you to adopt this resolution.
I believe that we require a council approval of this by motion. By motion from some of the... Motion and second word of discussion and further discussion with council on this item. There you go. Here you go. We do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Ordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Corbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
And Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Declaration of pass with a seven to zero vote.
Okay. Moving to new business item number two. Let's councilmember Moore, if you can, present it for our consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Number three, aye to three. Consideration possible action, first and only reading of ordinance number 1543. Some move.
Second.
We have motion and a second word of discussion. Staff report.
Get this roomister to cover, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I don't have a microphone, so I'll try to talk loud enough so everybody can hear. This ordinance, ordinance 1543, is one that I'd really rather not have to be presenting to council this evening. It's actually one that was created, it created necessity because of the legislature and this is their most recent legislative session. It's generated as a result of Senate Bill 1004. And just to give you a little bit of background, generally speaking, this ordinance is designed to govern the location of a new technology that's coming into the communications industry, and it's small cell nodes and small cell towers. You're probably familiar with cell towers because you usually see the large cell towers in town. They're located on private property. You don't really see these in the ride-a-way where you would see electric poles or where you would possibly see telecommunication lines, things of that nature. And they, the reason that's the case is because those cell tower companies did not have the right to locate our ride-a-way. The other utilities that you see in a ride-a-way have franchise, used to have franchise agreements. Some of those have been deregulated, and there are state statutes that govern those now. For instance, telecommunication cables have been deregulated. So, but they still have to pay franchise fees to the city to use our ride-a-way. Again, when it comes to cell companies, they didn't have the right to locate there. So we were not receiving franchise payments from them. And you would see these, what we call macro cell towers, located on private property. The cell tower industry felt like there was an unfair playing field with other, for instance, the telecommunication industry being able to use our ride-a-way, but that they weren't able to use the ride-a-way. So they sought legislation that would allow them to do so. Senate Bill 1004 is forcing cities to allow them to use the ride-a-way, and it also establishes fees by which they can do that. The cell tower technology that they want to use, they're much shorter cell towers. You may have seen these in some communities that are becoming much more prevalent out there now. And they have cell nodes on these towers. The purpose of that is so that it, having these cell towers, it frees up more capacity on their macro towers, and it also allows them to clear up any gaps and coverage that they may have in some of the communities. So there is a positive benefit to them. But in this particular case, Senate Bill basically told cities you have to allow them in the ride-a-way, and they can be located there on new cell poles. They can be there possibly on electric poles that are already in the ride-a-way. They can be located on street lights, signs, things of that nature. So what this ordinance before you is, is it's actually taking what we can do pursuant to the state law, to the new Senate Bill, which, by the way, the state legislature said you have to have this adopted by September 1st. And so obviously, tonight's very critical since tomorrow is September 1st. So, but what it does, what we've done is tried to simplify our current ordinance by getting rid of our telecommunication provision and actually combining that and our ride-a-way management ordinance and these new laws that will apply to cell towers, and combining that all into one. So we now have one ordinance that deals with it. I want to recognize Dara Matina, she did a lot of work here. Cities were, she's with Olson and Olson Law Firm. And just to let you know, we had all these cities sort of in a bind trying to get this new law, new ordinance is prepared within a very short timeframe. And she's been working with numerous cities to try to get some laws that we feel like were balanced and fair and consistent with the new legislation. But essentially, we have ride-a-way management guidelines already in place today, and this modifies them slightly to conform to the new laws. And then it also adopts design guidelines. So when somebody does come in, there are specific design guidelines that will apply to their facilities. And we can also require additional levels of approval for cell nodes that are to be placed in certain locations. I'll use as an example, if they want to locate in a residential area where it's, we have residential streets that are 50 feet, 50 feet or less, correct? Yeah, 50 feet, which is going to apply to almost every neighborhood. They, the only way they would have the right to locate in there without additional steps of approval would be if it's on an existing pole that's already in the ride-a-way. Otherwise, they would have to come forward and get a second level approval. It's almost like a conditional use permit. Same thing would apply with parks. We have additional guidelines where they may have to do enhanced, possibly camouflaging or things of that nature if it's an area, a special design district. And we have some of the design districts like the lower urban management district and things of that nature. So we do have additional rules and regulations to try to regulate our ride-a-way as much as we can within the law, and that's what this ordinance is intended to do. Dara knows a lot more about that industry than she did probably a month ago and probably more than she wants to know today. But it is an emerging new technology, which can be good and can be to our benefit. But we wanted to maximize our authority as a whole municipality to be able to govern our ride-a-ways. And unfortunately, the fees that we will recover under this ordinance are stipulated by state law and that we don't have the right to deviate from those fees. But if council has any specific questions, we'll be happy to answer those questions. But I wanted to give you a better idea and understanding of the law before we proceed.
Good. Like a good explanation, does the council have any comments or questions on that item?
I do, Mayor. Yeah, this is our first time to go through some of this stuff like that. We had real concern previously on ride-a-way and with cell towers and how close they've become to other facilities here in town and the height of it. And I guess, I wonder, what kind of height are we talking about on these towers? Are, if they're connected to the poles? And secondly, since they're coming on, on ride-a-way, do we have prior rights on that? We don't give our rights away if we have to do something within that ride-a-way.
You can go there. But that's for her.
First, let me say, I know we have a lot bigger people on their plate, the work on this is done before the storm, but it's sure a pleasure to be able to get here from 10 miles north of here. So we can't be sure that you won't be slammed with permits for these same things tomorrow. So in line of that, it's in front of you. So to the question, the statute actually limits a height to 55 feet or 10 feet above the average pole height within 300 feet. What we're talking about here is really a couple of different kinds of technology. You won't actually see a true cell tower. What you see is usually a little gray can. They exist a lot now on top of center point poles. That's what's called co-locating. So they take an existing pole, they attach it to that pole. Everybody's concern as far as the cities is that they can now under the statute connect to your street lights, your traffic signals, your stop signs, you name it. If there's a pole in the ride-a-way, they can do that, and you can't tell them no. So that's where all these regulations come in. Another type is where they put in a new pole of their own, and they attach the cell nodes to the new pole. And then there's another more type of technology that comes under this, which is the lines. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, basically, on one of the others, we had off 18, I think that Sheik Rock was kind of, this big cell tower went behind it. You know, it kind of has a storm, the foundation's not that good on the tower. It lays off in the building, and that was only about 30 feet behind the building. The tower is some like 60 feet or close to it, something like that. And that was a big concern when I was on the council previously, to have it one that close to, you know, a business there, and if it did topple, it'd come over on a hot business. And it would be liable for that, if it did.
So there is an indefinite provision in the statute that was already provided by the state legislature, and it's also embodied in your ordinance. You, your engineering department... You, your engineering department, and the union, and public works, and everybody works together, and you put together safety concerns, and one of them is a geotechnics survey required, to make sure that that foundation is safe for the pole height. It's based on pole height, if they're, you know, the lower pole heights, they're okay as long as they still meet all the limbo requirements, that the pole's strong enough, the hole, whatever they're putting on it, that it's the right kind of foundation for the soil. And then when the poles get higher, if the limit's like thirty and twenty-five feet, when they start to get higher, they require a full geotech survey, just like the city pole.
Would they be going on some of these, like the telephone poles out there, the high-cursory poles that you see laying over, if they're about three hangover?
Well, so technically, they could, but I mean, they're new ordinance, if that pole is not in position to hold the new technology, then they would have to replace the pole, and hey, right, and do the next polling.
That's correct, because what's going to happen is, they're going to have to come in no matter what, and get a permit. Sometimes they'll be able to go in and put in a opinion on this location, and just go ahead and attach it to an existing pole, but they may not be able to do that. But regardless, they have to get that permit. And as she just indicated, that if it's higher than thirty feet, they're going to have to do a soil test, and then if it's higher than forty-five feet, they're going to have to have a whole geotech.
And Louis, with our public works, and inspectors can go out and look at the pole that's going in, the foundation of it, whatever.
You can inspect it like anything else you do, through your standard code enforcement. So any other sort of stuff you need to inspect. They don't necessarily have to call for an inspection, and you can't require that. But if you know when the work's being done, and there's a requirement of your ordinance, then you're expected to go out and look, spot check, make sure they're being done correctly.
So if it's going on our ride-a-way, we can, we really can go out and inspect, make sure the foundation's going correctly, and the depth of the public, whatever.
You can inspect, you just can't, with that wire, that the company installing your technology call you first, and obtain an extra inspection. But you can certainly go out there, you know, if I give a permit, part of the permitting process is we're requiring that they tell you when they're going to start the work, when they're going to complete the work, if they're going to get close to any utilities, anything already existing in the ride-a-way. And so you already have that information, so your inspectors can go out and look at them when those poles are being installed.
So they're really not inspecting, going up there to the model.
Basically, yeah. Yeah, the legislature tied our hands a lot, but we did try to draft, you know, for instance, the permit requirement. They are not required to get a permit until this ordinance gets passed. So that's just the first line of defense, is even passing the ordinance saying you have to get a permit to do this.
They have to ask us over three years, I guess.
Only getting, it requires to do.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Jeff, let me ask you a question. I know that there may be, most of our ride-a-ways along between sidewalk and curb, they usually have a bunch of poles of all sorts, and you'll probably attach to one of those. But if you get to a point where there's no, something to attach it to, you're not going to use asphalt and wooden poles or anything, you're going to put something, a nice pole up for us, so that won't detract from the beauty of the city?
Oh, Lord, God, I hope so. So what we have put in your ordinance is they're basically, in your normal range, where all you can require are things related to safety and public health and welfare. So you can require them to not be too close to intersections, which is what we've done. To not be too close to bicycle paths, so they don't, they don't make them have a bar. They have to be a certain height, so that if dad carrying his kid on his shoulders won't run into one. So we have all of those types of things built in. Now you can't start worrying about aesthetic concerns, like is it a pretty pole? Until you get into the design areas, or underground areas, historic areas, and residential areas. So in those areas, which is what your fancy map at the back of the ordinance actually does, in those designated areas, there's an extra step to the permitting process, which is that you have to come through and get a land use approval. And Derek, correct me if I use the wrong terminology here, is it a specific use permit or conditional?
It's going to be similar process to a conditional use permit. And I'll just use as an example, one of those areas does be on the map, our corridor overlays. And so what they, Jeff, under our ordinance, right now, the way it's drafted, actually the design manual, which exhibits the ordinance, what they would be required to do is to place those facilities underground. These cell nodes can actually be placed underground, if they choose not to do so. And they want to actually put it above ground in a corridor overlay, they would need to come through and go through a process, get an additional approval, in essence, to get a variance to have it above ground in one of the areas.
Yep. We want to have a sense of pride with our new service. We don't want one of the folks up there who's ashamed of it. And I don't think we did too.
No, I think that is definitely the case, and when we drafted this ordinance, Olson and Olson did for, we started, we did, we're actually our first one. But then we started doing a bunch of things for other cities in the process. And I think we built in as much as we possibly can under that statute to do just that, to give you, you know, pride and protect as much as we can, the area that you have. I know that we even had a small cell node engineer who actually designed these for a living, looked at the ordinance, give us some feedback. And the only issue they had is putting everything underground, aside from the fact that the statute won't let us require that everywhere, is, as you know, flooding. So they said, no matter how large who those boxes are, they're going to flood, and then the whole city loses what new wireless service you have. So that was kind of their concern, is not doing it all the time. But yeah, I think you've got as much protection as you can build in for you.
So Kirby out here, you know, that's no use talking above ground, so it's less than five, and Kirby, so they have to go underground in that area?
They, so if they go underground, they still have to get a permit, just a regular permit. If they go above ground there, which they are still allowed to do, but before they can put an above-ground structure in the area, they have to come to you for permission.
And since that would be, for instance, on Kirby, because it may be in a design district where we can, and have enhanced regulations to make it, for instance, if you have an area where you got nice traffic signal poles, and you can then say, okay, we're in a design district, we're going to have you enhance the appearance of the poles and things of that nature, when they have to come through for that type of approval.
Mayor, I have a quick question. I have no idea what the volume of these permit applications is going to be, but there's a lot of information that has to be submitted with a permit. Have we given any thought to what kind of burden this is going to place on our permitting department to review all this?
Eric Cannon's worked with us, and he'll be basically overseeing the whole transition of this. And all right, anybody who wanted to work in the ride-a-way already needed to obtain permits under our ride-a-way management ordinance. Obviously, we're going to receive more permits now, because they used to not have to obtain permits. The question is, and we don't know that question yet, or the answer to that question yet, is how many are we going to see this week, or how many are we going to see in the coming weeks? We just don't know yet.
And Eric, there is, if I could speak to that just a little bit, there is something a little bit different about this permitting process compared to the way you normally do permits. So prior to loss of, I believe, holding inspection, it's obviously seeing that side of it. Normally, you put kind of the minimum you need to process the permit, and if you're missing something, you ask for that as you go along. In this case, the legislature has given us incredibly tight process and timeline. If you don't give an answer back fast enough, they're automatically deemed approved. You also are limited on what you can ask for as part of your permits. And so what we have to do is ask for everything we possibly need upfront, so that we don't delay the problem.
I'd like to have good lawyers.
I think it appears so.
Any other comments from council? I'm sorry, I didn't have any. Okay. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Dunn.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Wardwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
And Councilmember Owens. Councilman Corboll.
Aye.
Ordinance fifteen forty-three has passed seven to zero, and first and only read.
I'll look forward to the agenda, to recognize a couple of individuals who have contributed to our city's defense against Harvey. And there's our commissioner, Stacy Adams back here, and our constable Buck Stevens, who spoke just earlier. And they both have worked, and Mike Yosch with our Dray's District back here, I didn't see Mike when I had you, thank you. And of course, Dr. Kelly with our school system, and that's quite a challenge with that many locations and the issues there, so. I appreciate your contributions, really do. Move to item number four, which is one of the items we have withdrawn for a future council agenda. Let's move to item number five on our agenda. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R twenty seventeen dash one five two, so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. The city responds to far significant amounts of public rightsway medians. We're steadily trying to get atop that in different ways. We have a contract here for consideration that combines a couple of other contracts, make it a little bit easier administratively for the upcoming year, for overall work on that.
Okay, council, any questions on that on this item?
Just one quick one, Mayor. See, I don't understand why they're going a little step for me, just talk a little bit of content, that's why I asked.
We do have a citizen of the laws to speak on this item. Or we'll let them speak first, and then we'll, we'll come to you back. Please come up.
Hey, Mayor.
David Kirsch.
Chris, yes, sir. Mayor Reed and councilmembers, thanks for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I understand, given everything that's happened here recently, it may be a little crass to talk about mowing with the hurricane and everything, but this is going to get noted on later on up here or not, so I want to bring a few things to light. My name is David Kirsch, I work for Project Storm and L L C, we are a little bit back a little bitter. I'm a resident of Pearland. I want to bring up the fact that this was a best value bid. And I want to assess how it was graded for best value. First of all, we were low-bittered by a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And the reasons for our disqualification or non-recommendation is because we do not have an in-house chemical applicator or irrigation license. Now, I am currently working on getting those two applications, because once we found out, once that was posted on the agenda, with the executive summary, okay, well, then if that's something that's going to put us up for non-recommendation, I might as well have. But let me tell you that whether we have the licenses or not, I am still going to sub the work to someone who is a professional in doing those things. Let's face it, just because you have a license doesn't mean you're a qualified person to do something. So I would prefer to sub the work to a chemical applicator who's going to spray herbicides and whatnot on the turf in the medians, whose profession is chemical application. I could do it myself with a license, however, I trust someone whose career is in that field to do it better. So from that aspect, if you see best value as having an in-house license, that's fine. However, licensed or not, I would prefer a professional perform those duties. The other things that I would like to refer to is the addition to the second place in recommended bidders' bid form. They have a one-hundred-thousand-dollar value irrigation enhancement program that was not asked of, that was not an item that was asked in the bid form. And as a matter of fact, that was only something that the current contractor had inside information to, because they are out there doing the work. And I have several questions as far as this. If you have been doing the work for two years, and monthly irrigation inspection is included in the work, why would you wait until the project is up for rebid to say, oh, by the way, there's a hundred thousand dollar worth of work here to work that needs to be done, and we're willing to throw it in there for free? The recommended bid is for a million dollars, and they are suggesting that they will put ten percent of that into free irrigation in two cities. I may be young, but I do know that if you're willing to put in a hundred, ten percent of a project bid, you're still going to make money, which tells me that if your bid was high enough, you're going to give out freebies, and you're going to make money. And if the contract is removed for another two years, that hundred thousand dollars worth of freebies then becomes two hundred thousand dollars worth of profits in the end. So I don't see the best value in services that should have been provided in monthly maintenance, should have been taken care of previously, versus bringing it up now and saying, by the way, we would like to provide this just to sweeten the deal. As some additional information, this was a nine-hundred line item bid, for those who weren't aware of it. Nine-hundred line items takes a long time for anybody to fill out. I filled out each and every one of them, along with several of the other contractors. And I do not think it's fair to myself and the other contractors to see the recommended contractor having put a dollar value down for sixty plus or minus a fee. Lumping all of your numbers into something that the city, according to the bid form, was requesting to be broken down very specifically, so they could keep tabs of things, lumping that all into a very small number of bid items, that is very unresponsive to the bid form. And that causes problems in the future if the city would like to request additional services. You then have to negotiate with the contractor a price, because you do not have any unit prices to go off of. On top of that, here we are, here we are with the contract date of September first. And I say, if the contract was awarded to make it back start September first, you betcha. Would I be fully mobilized? No, I wouldn't, and neither would any other contractor except for the current contractor. This bid was pushed off and pushed off and pushed off, this decision was pushed off long enough that every contractor other than the recommended contractor is at a disadvantage. According to the executive summary, which was submitted on July seventeenth, I have email records, I don't have them with me today, but email records with the Parks Department. By August fifteenth, I was still told that they did not have any recommendations whatsoever. However, July seventeenth, this executive summary was turned in. In that amount of time, I could have very well received our licenses, and put something else together for you. But that's pretty much all I have. I would just like you to assess the entire situation, and really take some careful consideration into what's best for value versus what is laid out here in the executive summary.
Good. Appreciate you coming, second.
Mayor, if it's appropriate, you're open to it, we can take a look at the questions, maybe if we're close to calling, we'll bring it back and give you some information on that.
Mayor, I'll include that we close all this and have staff make, have an opportunity to address some of these questions. Frankly, I just haven't had time to dig into it, and I don't feel like I'm, presently, I will make an educated vote on this, so I think that's appropriate.
We have a motion and a second.
Mayor, on the motion, if I can, is, I mean, this is up for renewal tomorrow. What, I know it's too wet right now to mow, but as soon as that sun comes out and dries, it's going to be shooting up. What does this timing look like with the next meeting, and to get this resolved? What's the city going to look like before we make a decision?
We're able to extend the existing contract and continue the services, and then, so that we can make this decision at a future meeting.
Is that just a month-to-month extension, or is that?
Basically, we typically will extend something like this for a month, and then if we need to, again, we can extend this one. And there may be some limitations to that, that we're purchasing on, but I believe we can extend this one again, or extend this one at this point.
Thank you.
Mayor, if we're taking questions on this, a couple of things I'd like to look at. I guess there was nine hundred items on there to bid. Is the contractor you recommended, they did all of those nine items?
Is the contractor you recommended that bid all of those line items or not? On that, and was the yard... was that part of the bid as it was presented to some people to bid on? So those are my main two questions that I have on this contract.
Did you ask about was each line item required to be bid on for the... Yeah, I won't find out any line items in the contract. $22,000 bid. Did they do all of that?
We got Sullivan, we have an offer for the table on board. postpone. We need probably a clarification.
Yeah, we'll those are the motions.
Everybody's looking for a table on there or something?
Yes, sir.
Just postpone.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
No.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion to postpone 2017-152 was approved six to one.
Okay. Let's move to item six on our agenda. Captain...
Consideration of Possible Action Resolution Number R 2017-152. So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. The city does have a extraterritorial jurisdiction in which we made future service plans for a whole range of musical services, utilities. Each year, does the city take a look at that and consider what should come up next? And we'll... this particular area is in our future land use plan, A and C. A is the area close to our southwest area, touching down on the Sanaa, also includes our future water treatment plant. And C is a small island that round country place. So recommend consideration to begin the formal process of all this has been in the works. And we did have a community input or public information meeting with... that we invited all the property owners there too. But this... there's a process and there's future public hearings and action by the council, a couple readings, so there'll be several other times where people can provide input. And we're going to wrap this up if the council sees fit by the end of November. So just grant you for consideration.
Did you have further comments on that?
No, Your Honor, thank the city manager.
Okay, good. Super. Council, have any questions or comment on this item? Hearing none, we have a motion, second on the floor. Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-173 was approved seven to zero.
Okay, moving to item seven on our agenda. Councilmember Little, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action Resolution Number R 2017-174. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Likewise, Mr. Mayor, this is three areas that were in our future land use plan for incorporation into the city that are in our ETJ. These areas are boarding the rece... receiving our fire services. Incorporation would also give them our police protections and the other range of state services. The state law did change this last special session, so we recommending that we proceed since they have it in our ETJ and assume it'd be incorporated at some point. As we can do this by the end of November, and likewise, there will be future considerations of public hearings, please.
Okay. Council, have any question to come in on this item? Hearing none, we do have motion, second on the floor. Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-174 is approved seven to zero.
Moving to item number eight on our business agenda. Councilmember Kirsch, would you present this one to our...
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action, first reading of ordinance number CUP 17-0002.
So move. Second.
Councilwoman, staff report on this item now.
Mr. Mayor, this is a initial use permit for a phone station off of Pearland Parkway. There was a joint public hearing on this, so you should be familiar with the project and what they're asking for. I believe the planning and zoning had a split decision, which is a made recognition for a council on a CUP that required a simple majority.
Okay, so council, have any question or comment on this item?
Flit is public comment.
Okay. We do have a request. It's for item number eight. This is item number... seven. Okay, go. I pulled up the... well, pulled up the one that already spoken. Sorry about that.
Adams, slide D. Yes. I'm sorry, I thought the guy had been lost, so I brought my tablet home. That's why I put one of you. My name is Adams. I'm a resident of Pearland, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak today. Councilman, if you look at the first page, I would like to go through this. If you look at the first page, this is just to show you that the location of the property which is coming right north of Pearland Parkway. Look at the second page, it shows you that in 2014, before the CUP started, I got approval by that time. The only thing that called it out is because I was asking for the fuel station and service storage. So it took me about one year to do all the diligence until I found out I needed to remove the service storage from the project. By that time, this is happening the third floor, the third picture. This guy opened it right there next to the shell. Then the CUP started. And as a listener of Pearland, I believe that CUP is a great thing for the city and for the residents, also for the business owners. Because if this had this, if the CUP was there at that time, I'm sure that shell business owner would be protected from that side of the business. So after that, it started the CUP. And if you look at the fourth page, and that one is showing you it's about 6,500 square foot building. And if I want to build up a gas station, I only need 3,000. This is different than a gas station. This is a kind of concept like it's all open concept from inside between pizza and other kind of facilities inside. All this is open concept from inside. Also to cover Councilman French last meeting when he mentioned about the Jean desert. Since the last meeting till this meeting, we made all the recommendations for the city, including pushing the Jean desert driveway all the way to 200 feet. And to make sure we have about 5% of bicycle park and 6% in the driveway in the walk side on the Pearland Parkway. So we made all the city recommendations from the last time meeting. If you see all, also by my fellow resident, Ms. I forgot her name. She mentioned last meeting that she was concerned about the light, which is to show also the light that we need the city requirement. If you look at the... at this other page, this is just something to cover about the project. The project will be about 39% green, 35,659 square foot of green in the property of 2.5 hours. This is something because I know that the councilman Owen was concerned about the tree. And all these things being... if you look at the tree survey, 70% of the trees are 12 inches or less. Only six trees are between 20 and 28 inches. And two of them will be safe. If we go to the next page, this is the type of business we're running. This is a neighborhood store. This is a neighborhood store, which is we can have pizza as a family, pizza where family can eat, neighbors can eat, children can stay. And we can have fast service, we can have fresh bakery, farm yogurt. So as you see, our slogan will be farm-friendly, fast, fresh, timely. So it's for really neighborhood store. If you look at the other... on this page, you will see that the way we can structure this kind of neighborhood store with the neighborhood environment, a lot of green, a lot of environment, and everything. The other thing they mentioned in last meeting that, if you look at the next page, the last thing they mentioned in last meeting that we passed about every gas... we passed gas station everywhere, gas station out of pocket, out of pocket like the park. Right? If you're coming from Dixie Farm, okay, all the way to the 2A, go to work, there is no fuel station on the northeast side. The only way you have to get one is to get outside of your way to go to the HCP. And I did that. I went from Saturday, I went from the sign, and I drove all the way out of my way, go to the HCP. And it was very hard to get out from the HCP to go back to the... to the morning traffic. So if you are residents of a village at Mayor's Creek or River Mess, and you're going to work, you will not see any fuel station on your way to 2A. Like you see from Dixie Farm and Pearland Parkway all the way to 2A, it's about six miles. Next page, this is a sample of a project that I did the last 2012. It'll show you the type and quality of the project as you, which you see the outside has a PCD Y frozen yogurt and donuts and a neighborhood store. As we see from outside, it has its own concept, but if you go to the next page, you will see that inside it is all open to be touched. The other pages, you see how we are involved in the community too. When we did have the grant opening, it was a different, with more just blacks and granite. We invited seven chambers of commerce. We were involved with the school, okay, involved in the school by encouraging the students to be street A and Street A and no absence by giving their phone. We were involved also with the fire station to get incorporation in the property. We also had a program which we can give the customers every quarter, they can vote with the charity organizations, we can vote and donate money to them every quarter. So we involved in the school, we involved in the community, we're just not the gas station in this neighborhood there. And you see the other picture, Mr. Mayor was also invited at that time. And that's... that's it. I have been working on this project since 2003. I put a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of resource. And I have a passion for my community, and I assure you, this is going to be a good neighborhood store for to help our neighbors. We can be there for your neighbors, not just another gas station. Thank you.
Good. Appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. Staff report on this item at this point?
I'll pick a real... Jamie Brighter, cleaner, wants to highlight anything from the staff side.
I just wanted to reiterate, following JTH and the P and Z meeting, all of the staff concerns were addressed. The applicants submitted the vast site plan that showed them addressing all the staff's concerns, so that was addressed.
Let me support that... those comments with the planning and zoning commission, when they did meet, they... they did have a motion to correct the motion they had, and then when it did pass, it passed by vote of three to three, which is a tie. Present this for... enter that into the proceedings tonight for... for the interruption. We have motions. We have a report from staff. What is... the council have a question coming on this item?
I did.
Okay, Captain. Oh, they're... I heard, I couldn't see where it came from.
Yeah, just a couple of things on it. I see where you marked out all the stations along through there. Put the gun one on Bear Rose and Wal on there. I just wondered, do you have any other stations in Pearland that you own?
I do have one in Sparsa and Bookaway from the meeting. That's the one that sampled that. The last page, that's the one over there in Sparsa and Bookaway.
So within there, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, plus one, these seven?
No, not possibly. That's possibly not mine.
I just don't really... for that piece of land there, I don't think it's a good location for, I think, the better uses of the land and the service station, to be quite honest with you. And I know the service station would be the first part, and there are sort of things that you want to build onto there. I know we've got one at the end of Starsdale there coming into Green Tea, and I think they do little tacos in there and they do, I don't know what else, some kind of ice cream or something. But anyway, I just personally, I just don't think that's the right spot for it. Been several things, start going that location on there and backs up right up to someone else that owns a house right behind the station where it would be. And so for me, I couldn't... I can't vote for this.
It all stands, this has a sort of a market in addition to the fellow stakeholders.
Is that right?
Kind of a service. We sell coke and groceries and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's going to be the roadside.
Is that going to be part of the station? Would that be a part of the station? Station with that back behind it?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't see a picture of that in here, so I wasn't sure.
I saw the picture of the... but the station was right here.
Okay. That's how I figured I haven't seen that. Okay, good. Council, have any further questions or comments? If not, we have a motion or second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Order 17-0002 is approved six to one.
Okay. That information on the record. Let's move to item nine, that has been pulled for future agenda. Item number 10 has been pulled for future agenda as indicated from my... when there are remarks. Moving to item number 11. Councilmember Owens?
Consideration of Possible Action Resolution Number R 2017. So move.
Consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2017 dash one seven seven, so move.
Second.
We have a motion, second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a word about water main contract, we're getting our water services out of 288. Hughes Ranch, yeah, but, along Hughes Ranch Road, I guess it's in the 288 project. Take that back, it's an advanced Hughes Ranch project, it sounds like. For the 288 project.
Okay. Did you prepare? Just complete your report.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does, does council have any question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilor.
Some time ago, I requested some information on the sound wall for Hughes Ranch Road specifically. At the corner of Sterling and Hughes Ranch Road, there's two homes that sit outside of Crystal Lake subdivision that will not get a sound wall, based upon the information now. I, I don't understand how Crystal Lake subdivision will get a sound wall. It stops, you have a house right behind Crystal Lake subdivision, Sterling Drive, and then across the street from Sterling, there's a house that sits there. Both those houses on that corner do not receive a sound wall in this. I don't think it's, it's right. You have a whole subdivision that will get a sound wall, and you have two homes that are going to be excluded.
Okay. Any other question or comment?
Mayor?
Councilor.
Can, can staff give us a quick idea on when construction will start, will there be any interruption to service during that construction phase?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The plan is, is ordered, what is ordered tonight is to then sit down with the contractor, take a look at schedule, based on, of course, everything that's happening right now, to take a look at that. This is just strictly for the water line, as was mentioned by Senator Pearson, is to get that service established ahead of, ahead of the four lane road expansion. So to answer your question in terms of interruption to service, well, staff has been taking a look at how we can keep our system working and running, and isolate those areas specifically through the addition of new valves or a couple of small minor connections in, in some areas, and so we can put that line ahead and make those connections. The only one that would be a concern is when we start working the Challenger Elementary Square, and we'll have to work with Principal Man, Superintendent there to address that issue of what is tying the water line to their service and the fire line. And part of the system is also to relocate those items outside of our future road expansion as well, so we don't have to redo it twice.
Council, any other question or comments?
I just got a couple.
Good.
And forget my energy, I used to be more well versed on this before the meeting, so I apologize. So is this project that's taking existing, like the existing well bench, and we're just relocating it? So we're not upsizing anything?
Right, this is, the line that along Hughes Ranch Road is segmented, and so this one will be continuing, so, and so we'll be able to provide, we have a segment to go ahead.
So we're going to extend all the way over to Smith and finish it with?
Call it all the way to Smith. This will completely, like I said, it's segmented again, and so this will address a lot of issues.
How old's that one? What's your, your?
Eight years old. Segments of it are eight, eight twelve, variegated.
I don't think my, I was just curious, how, how long that's for.
We did work that task, we were talking $10,000, we paid the one, two, three, four, five, five, six.
Given this is approved tonight, what are your specs and want to start working?
Well, to sit down with the contractor, so once it's approved, contractor's sign, we will sit there, and I would love to start work within 30 days, but we're talking a CUP by Friday.
I got to pull the third and fourth one, and all of that.
Thirty, thirty, forty, fifty days out. Material procurement's going to be paid on this, because it is HCP, it's middle, maybe done.
Is HCP, maybe?
It's HCP. We believe it.
I was going to say.
Ready to go back to the contractor, so they don't mobilize, we have to go back there. No, no, we want to make sure it's clear, we want it in there and have it.
Is this going to take place, I think it does, with the water that will be announced to the west side? One of each of the west areas.
This area serves probably primarily from the plant, the home.
Yeah, this, this area is served from both South Down and Country Place water wells. If they go down, we might have a little influence out of the 521 pump station, but it's primarily groundwater.
Well, this is one, the water line will go over there, and one will run out of water out of Hughes Ranch on Southeast Street, right?
That's in the.
Shetter and Carlon.
You're right.
Just wanted to put, this is just inside, but given, so we're going to extend this well bench all the way over to Smith Ranch, I'm assuming that Smith Ranch, that really projects going to have some water line improvements in it as well. Is there, since, again, since relatively short distance, they'll have construction help, are we looking at it in advantage of taking water line on the Saturday day, and looking at it in what we intend to be?
Here it is.
We have the bore underneath the Texas Highway, but, and you have, if you have any answer, I just don't know if you had, had a thought on that.
You're talking, council, you're talking about 24, Texas Parkway?
Well, the loop's got to go across, the looping is going to have to go across, not part of this project, that's up, considering it's part of the contract.
We're looking, looking to start with a 90 degree total, I was going to talk about that. There is another utility relocation that is already approved, this happened against that Smith Ranch Road, Hughes Ranch Road, in terms of relocation of water sewer, right there for the total project itself. That is.
We can take a look at that, as we're updating some of our water master plan, the current water master plan is not, not for.
Looping in that particular location, we've got a crossing further north than Spectrum, as well as north of the yard, and then it's south at Broadway, so we've got those cross connections underneath the 288 right away, those existing prelocations. So our existing water model isn't called for any additional ones, except down in County Road 59, but we can.
Okay. I apologize, I apologize, I'm just, just curious, I didn't give you the information later on.
Any other question?
Probably under 280.
We already have a call, we've probably already got one. We've got three of them, the fourth one, 59.
Okay, any other comment, question? We do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilor Oll?
Aye.
Councilor Carlon?
Aye.
Councilor Moore?
Aye.
Councilor Reed?
Aye.
Councilor Orno?
Aye.
Councilor Lill?
Aye.
Councilor Perez?
Aye.
Resolution 2017 dash 167 is approved seven to zero.
Moving to item 16, the city manager played to present the [inaudible].
Sure. We obviously had, this is a budget item, I'll keep it for more talk than we energy for, but we did have three items, and if you are so inclined, if you wanted to make some decisions, we also have a budget meeting on Tuesday for the tax rate and other budgetary items, so clear out the council, if you want to close out any of those three, so we can focus in, or whatever the council will is.
I'm hoping that we.
Okay. Sir, [inaudible], why don't you lead us up on this?
Yep, in, in terms of credit card fees, the way I said, staff's proposing to postpone it, I think that I'm fine with that. I think that makes sense with all the issues we've had on utility billing in the recent past, so I'm, I'm fine with that. I'd like to discuss the motor pool fund more at a future meeting, and same with number three, the library construction.
So would we, could we recommend amending the motion?
That's not.
That's not.
Councilor Moore?
Aye.
Councilor Reed?
Aye.
Councilor Oll?
Aye.
Councilor Carlon?
Aye.
Councilor Moore?
Aye.
Councilor Oll?
Aye.
Councilor Carlon?
Aye.
Councilor Oll?
Aye.
Councilor Carlon?
Aye.
Councilor Moore?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-177 is approved seven to zero.
Moving to item 16, the city manager played to present the [inaudible].
Sure. We obviously had, this is a budget item, I'll keep it for more talk than we energy for, but we did have three items, and if you are so inclined, if you wanted to make some decisions, we also have a budget meeting on Tuesday for the tax rate and other budgetary items, so clear out the council, if you want to close out any of those three, so we can focus in, or whatever the council will is.
I'm hoping that we.
Okay. Sir, [inaudible], why don't you lead us up on this?
Yep, in, in terms of credit card fees, the way I said, staff's proposing to postpone it, I think that I'm fine with that. I think that makes sense with all the issues we've had on utility billing in the recent past, so I'm, I'm fine with that. I'd like to discuss the motor pool fund more at a future meeting, and same with number three, the library construction.
So would we, could we recommend amending the motion?
That's not.
That's not.
That's not. Councilor Moore?
Aye.
Councilor Reed?
Aye.
Okay, and Councilor Perez, sorry about that.
That was my fault.
Councilor Oll?
Yes.
That was note on the record for discussion, and any input at all, because there's no motion required for, for that. Moving in on item number 12, mayor and council, who's your issue for the council agenda? Any items? Bearing none, going to the business, we've got a new business item 13, says I can adjourn this particular session.